So Lori's not coming.
Lori's not coming.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our City Council briefing session for December 7th. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
He's going to be absent.
Okay. Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmembers Burke and Cathcart are absent.
You mean, Kinnear.
Kinnear, sorry, sorry.
All right. Great. So, Mr. Ormsby, I think we have you for the advanced agenda if you would like to take that up.
Great. Thank you, Council President and members of the council. On the consent agenda for next week, we'll start with proposed purchases for the street department, and Clint Harris is here.
Good afternoon, Council President and council. The street department is requesting approval to purchase a 10-wheel dump truck body using Washington State Contract 01117 for $133,493.59, including tax. And that's 1A. 1B is to purchase a dump body for that chassis from RCW Group LTD out of Tacoma, Washington for the 10-wheel dump truck using Washington State Contract 01513 for $125,305.93, including tax.
Thank you, Clint. Next, we have a proposed purchase of a hydrant truck for the water department, and Lauren Searle is here.
Good afternoon, council. This item is a request purchase a hydrant truck. This is actually the chassis. The service bed and crane were approved last week on the agenda. This chassis is through Columbia Ford, purchased off of Washington State Contract for a total purchase price of $56,800.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thanks.
Next, we have four or five contracts for professional services consultant agreement, and Dan Buller from Engineering is here.
Good afternoon. Items Mike mentioned are the proposed on-call contracts for local or state-funded projects with consultants listed on your agenda sheets for specialty services, including geotechnical engineering, surveying historic resources in real estate. These consultants originally appeared on your agenda on 11/23, but are appearing again due to some minor contract modifications pertaining to payment procedures. The proposed contracts are for two years with an optional one-year renewal.
Thank you, Dan. Next, we have a proposed contract for Microsoft Enterprise Software Support, and Mike Sloan from IT is here.
Good afternoon, City Council. Item number four is covering our renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. It's actually called the Office 365 Agreement, because it does allow us to engage in putting everything in the cloud, and that's what we've been doing over the last year. This is the renewal of the three-year license set. And what they do is they annualize the pricing of this. There is a discrepancy, or there's a difference in year one is $10,000 less. They're honoring a quote they gave us a couple months ago, but when Microsoft re-updated their pricing to the provider and their latest pricing, it increased it by $10,000. But this vendor kept to their original quote of the first year only, of the $752,465.87. So asking your approval for that.
And Mike, I notice you have the next proposed contract renewal as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So again, council, item number five. This is another option within our support for all of our Cisco products. It's called SmartNet. It's maintenance and service support. And this is, it was vetted out through an RFP, and this is a continuation of that same contract. We did multi-year with extensions, so asking your approval for that for 2021.
I see no questions. I'll move to the next item, which is a proposed contract extension for our employee assistance program. And Teresa Collins from Employee Benefits is here to answer any questions that the council may have. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you. That was very easy. I appreciate it. Have a great day.
I don't see Margaret on the phone, but there is, we would like to accept an emergency solutions grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce, which would also authorize CHHS to subaward funds to eligible organizations. If there are any questions, and I see Margaret's not here, I would be happy to have you forward those to me so that we can get answers back to you.
I think the question I would have, and maybe others, is are we just accepting the money or do we know which organizations we're going to distribute it to yet?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer, but I will follow up and get an answer to all of you tomorrow. Okay. And next, we have a recommendation for an addition to the Spokane Register of Historic Places, and Megan DeVall is here to present this item.
Prevent. Uh-oh. Yes. Hi there. I will quickly share my screen and try to get through this quickly since everybody else is so much faster than me. Okay. I'm guessing you're seeing the correct screen. So, run through this really quickly. Spokane Register of Historic Places is our local program. Listing on the register is voluntary and requires the consent of the owner for listing. And you are approving today the management agreement that allows us to protect those resources for the future through design review, only when a building permitted a thought. And this is the way we also offer incentives to folks for listing. Oops. There we go. Properties generally have to be 50 years or older, and they have to meet one of the criteria within our historic preservation ordinance. We can list buildings, sites, districts, structures, and objects. And four or five categories we have are category A, broad patterns of history; B, an association with a significant person; category C, which is what the Mary Frances Apartments is today, is its architecture, design, or construction; B is basically our archaeology category; and E is based on cultural heritage and maybe doesn't have enough integrity to meet one of the other characteristics or other criteria. Okay, so let's launch right into today's nomination that you're considering. Built in 1910, the Mary Frances Apartments is located at 1907 and 1909 West 7th Avenue on the westernmost edge of the Lower South Hill. The apartment building is a fine example of the craftsman style with Tudor revival details and styling. The property has a low to medium pitch gable and roof with widely overhanging eaves and exposed rafter tails, a very low pitched center shed dormer on the roof's north facade, an exposed foundation of basalt rubble mix, a brick-clad first floor, and a false half-timbered and pebbled stucco-clad second floor. Nomination also includes the open brick, oops, I will go back to that, the open brick garages that are built into the side of the steep hillside to the rear and the dry stacked basalt retaining wall that are both located to the rear of the apartment building that you see in that lower right-hand photo. The building's interior is comprised of four identical apartment units, two on the first floor and two on the second floor, and is currently undergoing a complete rehabilitation. And the photo shows the units in varying stages of that work. The ones that you see here, this one has been almost completely finished. It's the only one that actually has painted woodwork, so you'll see some of the other ones that are in an ongoing stage that have just stained woodwork. Each apartment has a living and dining room with a wood-burning fireplace, a bedroom, kitchen, bathroom, and built-in buffets, cabinets, and cupboards. My favorite built-in feature of these is, and you can see on this left-hand side, is there is a small cabinet in the kitchen pantry for slipping a dish onto the waiting buffet in the dining room. And that's what that little door is for. It's kind of open in that left-hand picture. The apartment building is remarkably intact and retains nearly all of its original features. Only one apartment has the woodwork painted, as I mentioned. The others retain the stained wood trim, and they will continue to have that. The center picture here shows that cute little cubby into the dining room. This is the pantry and the kitchen of this really sweet little apartment building. Mary Frances Apartments is eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under category C for its architectural significance as a fine example of a small apartment building designed in the craftsman style with Tudor revival influence. The property's period of significance is 1910, the year the apartment building was constructed. Building contractor Charles A. Brigham constructed the Mary Frances Apartments for $7,000. After more than a century of use, the Mary Frances Apartments is in particularly fine condition with a high degree of architectural integrity in original location, design, materials, workmanship, and association. The entire property, the apartment building, garages, and retaining wall is individually eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under category C. And I'll just run through the, I think this is the last slide. So that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Next, we have amendment number three to an interlocal agreement with the county, the city of Spokane Valley, and the city regarding the tourism promotion area. And Mike Piccolo from City Legal is here to present this.
Good afternoon. As Mike mentioned, this is an interlocal agreement with those three parties. The original interlocal agreement was signed in 2004, and we've had two prior amendments. This is the third one. And this amendment is coming about because of a change to state law that came out this past spring that authorized up to a $3 increase in the special room charge per day, per room that became available. It would be available for about a six-year period from April 1, 2021 to July 1, 2027. And this can only come forward if there is a request, a petition, by the entity that would be paying up to 60% of the proceeds. And Spokane County did receive such a petition from those businesses, those hotels and motels that would be paying more than 60% of the projected revenue from this increase. So with that petition, Spokane County presented this to the tourism promotion area and the hotel motel advisory committee. They came back with a recommendation to go forward with this. So we have three main changes. The first one is the increase from $2 to $4 for those entities in zones A, B, and C, which are A is the downtown core, B is the remaining part of the city and Spokane Valley, C is the unincorporated Spokane County. And then the fourth category, Zone D, there'd be an increase from 50 cents to $1. And that Zone D consists of those entities that generate up to $500,000 in revenue for the year. The second change would be to have an additional quarterly report from the TPA manager to the three parties. Then the third change is to introduce a revised termination provision. This has gone back and forth a few times over the past, over the years. This change will enable any one of the three parties to terminate their participation in the interlocal agreement by giving notice by March 1st, I'm sorry, March 31st of even number of years. And if they don't do that, then the agreement goes forward for two more years. And I think this was important to a number of the parties, because otherwise, the agreement was open-ended. It would go on in perpetuity unless the participating entities, the lodging and motel businesses, brought forward a petition to dissolve the TPA. So the party thought it would be appropriate to have a means for any one of the governmental partners to terminate their participation. But the other, the remaining two could still go forward and enter into their own separate interlocal agreement to continue the program. And Spokane County will be having a public hearing on this a week from tomorrow. And so the council is scheduled to approve this next Monday. The county will have their public hearing the following Tuesday and take their own action to approve this as well. And my understanding is that Spokane Valley is on board and prepared to approve this item as well.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And the last two items are the placeholders for the payment of claims and previous approved obligations, and also city council minutes. Then we move to the legislative agenda. And the special budget ordinances, we have two that relate to fire. And Chief Schaefer from Spokane Fire Department is here to present these items.
The items refer to our ability, and Councilmember Mum may have a special interest in this from the mobilizations throughout the summer. Routinely, we bring this item to city council as a method to retrieve those funds from the fires, the cost of the fires, from labor and a supply standpoint, and then move that money into the fire department's overtime budget to cover that loss. Both of those are related to that process. I'd be more than welcome to entertain any questions pertaining to that.
Yes, Chief Schaefer, if I may. Can you explain what various accounts, same amount, what you mean by that?
So there are a number of areas in the fire department's budget that we end up paying for these services that we'll be retrieving that money and replacing it, such as maintenance, supply, the overhead costs, overtime for personnel that are in the account for Proposition 1, and others that are in the general fund account that aren't included. So unfortunately, there's not just one bucket where we expended those costs. There were a number of different buckets throughout the fire department's budget. We intend to replace that dollar for dollar.
And so is this repayment from the wildfire entities that we hunt people work for? Or are we still waiting for that money to continue?
That's it. That entire amount is the cost of our personnel going as well as the cost of the overhead expense, the vehicle, and such for them to participate in the deployment itself.
So this year, just one more question, if I may. This year, we didn't take that money out of the general fund necessarily that needs to be paid back to the general fund. We took it out of, internally within the fire department.
Well, I guess from my perspective, the general fund is the fire department. With the exception of the special fund for the 1/10th, there are some FTEs that, not 1/10th, I'm sorry, Proposition 1. There are some FTEs that are in the Prop 1 funded positions that likely were mobilized. And those dollars will be replaced there in the overtime lines and the Proposition 1 funding. Otherwise, all of them are returning all that dollar amount for payrolls, returning back into the fire department's overtime lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Schaefer? Thank you, Brian. Now, we finally move to resolutions and final reading ordinances. And the first three resolutions are sponsored by Council President Beggs. So, Council President.
Okay, the first one we briefed just a few moments ago at Public Safety. That's the waiver of the ride-along requirement for the Office of Police Ombudsman and the Office of Police Ombudsman Commission. Again, if you weren't at Public Safety, this has to do with waiving the requirement for ride-alongs given the COVID restrictions that preclude them. And I'll just go to the next one, which is Resolution 0089, which has to do with supporting the use of the Commerce Grant money to establish new beds for young adults as homeless shelters. And Councilmembers Mum and Kinnear put together a substitute version on this, which I thought was great. And I believe Councilmember Mum might be making a motion to substitute.
Yes, I'll make a motion to substitute. We added some language for LGBT, and we also added language that would allow a lease option, so it wouldn't narrow it just to a building purchase. And then we added an option for more than one building. So if there was a short-term and a longer-term need that we could collaborate with Spokane Valley. So I think we improved the flexibility of the document.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? One thing I just wanted to note that since we started on this, there have been some new creative ideas coming along. And so I'm really hopeful. I had a good talk with the mayor today, and it seems like there's some options for actually getting this stood up as opposed to what it looked like was potentially happening, which is the funds would move away from a young adult shelter, which is one of the top needs identified. Any other commentary? All those in favor of accepting the substitute version indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? All right, that substitute version is there. Madam Clerk, have we sent that to you yet?
No. I'll check my emails right now, though.
Okay. We'll get a copy of it to you. The next one is a follow-up on our last PIES meeting, and that's a resolution requesting that the administration go ahead and put out for requests for proposal for design and feasibility studies of the fluoride system for drinking water. Several council members and others in the community are looking to understand what the actual cost might be in feasibility in case there needed to be some further vote or adjustment. So that's what that resolution is about. And then I think that's all of mine. So back to you, Mr. Ormsby.
Thank you, Council President. Next, we go to a proposed resolution declaring ESRI as a sole source. And Mike Sloan, again, from IT is still here.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. I apologize for the bright, shiny forehead. I think I'm dealing with Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, this city lighting. So I apologize for that brightness of my large head. So Resolution 91 is for Environmental System Research Institute. I'll help you out, Mr. Ormsby. It's ESRI. And ESRI is the basis for all of our GIS data. And without it, we are unable to publish our mapping and that. So this is a re-establishment of a multi-year contract that we've done in the past, and we've included the county and Avista in the partnership of how we use this product set. There's been some changes in it and in partnership, and we could go into detail if you want. But this is the setup to allow the city of Spokane to use this data that we share with any agency, whether it's public safety, permitting, all of that. So this is probably one of our bigger and more highly-used resource across the enterprise. So we're asking approval for the sole source. And this is a repeat of this contract that we've done ever since I've been here in '09.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a long-awaited item, which is the renewal of a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Comcast Cable Communications. And Marlene Feist is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, council. So tonight, or at your next meeting, we will finally get to vote on the Comcast Cable franchise. The first reading was held several weeks ago. We have four weeks of publication on those franchise agreements. So it's been in weekly publication mode for the last several weeks. As you're well aware, this is for a 10-year franchise that would have a number of benefits for our community, including public access and government access channels, money for supporting those channels, taxes, franchise fees, all of those things that we want to offer to our citizens through the cable franchise. So if you have specific questions, great. Otherwise, we've kind of gone over this two or three times at this point.
Thank you, Marlene. And next, we've got two items that we'll cover under hearings, which is the next item. Then we have a proposed ordinance regarding the executive and administrative organization of the city, which was briefed at the meeting last week. And this is the time of year when these items come before the council as we finalize approval of the budget. And then the next two items will be covered under the hearings.
Mike, Mike, sorry.
Oh, excuse me.
I think Karen has a question.
But real quick, is Amber Richards available now? Or if I have an additional question, can I just email her?
You could email her. She's unfortunately out today. But she'd be happy to hear from you.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we have two additional hearing items, and we'll cover those in the next section. So we go to hearings. And the first two hearings are on a final reading ordinance on the name of two streets or drives in the city. And Tammy Ponquist is here to present those items.
Good afternoon. These were briefed last week and have also gone to committee. So the first one is a hearing and final reading on the street name change of Fort George Wright with Stockway. I did send late last week some additional public comments. So I hope that you guys did receive that as well. The next hearing is a final reading and hearing for the street name change of a segment of Shelby Ridge Street in Fair Court. There are no current addresses on that one, and it would connect to a new plant that is starting to build some homes in it.
The next item is relating to a land use application, which was previously deferred from November 23rd to next which was previously deferred from November 23rd to next week. And Kevin Freebot is here to respond, excuse me, to any questions or issues the council would like addressed.
Mr. Armesby, this is Candace Mum. Kevin, have we reached out to the neighborhoods or anything? Have we heard back from them? We were waiting just to get some concepts on a different zone they hadn't considered.
Yeah, we reached out to the neighborhood council and they've responded. We'll have everything for you in the packet this Friday.
Sooner would be great. Friday is not, you know, we don't have a lot of time to make calls to folks and then decide on Monday if there's any way we could get that sooner. I think that would be awesome.
Okey dokey. Thanks, Kevin. And finally, we have two items relating to the proposed adoption of the budget. And Paul and Josie is here to speak to any issues, questions, or concerns the council may have.
Council President, I do have one item on there.
Sure.
I think by law, we would need to close the hearing following tonight's meeting on the 7th. So the hearing wouldn't continue until the 14th.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Council President and members of the council, that concludes the presentation of the advanced agenda for next week's meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved. That brings us to tonight's agenda. And Councilmember Mum had a question on item number three of the consent agenda. And Councilmember Mum, do you want to try to state that? I'm not sure if there's anyone here can answer it, but give it a shot.
Yeah, maybe, Mr. Armesby, can confirm. I wasn't entirely, this looks like a two year renewal, not just an annual renewal. So it's $3.85 a year? That was my one question.
I, Councilmember Mum, I don't know the answer to that. I can try to reach out to David Payne or Clint Harris to get an answer.
Well, I guess probably my bigger question is, is this an up to $3.85 or we just pay them $3.85? Because I can imagine we have fewer needs for auto body repair this year. And I just want to make sure we just pay for what we need.
Yes, it's a not to exceed contract.
Okay. All right, well, I think it is a two year based on the documents that were put in. It might be, just a suggestion, maybe see how item two says five year contract. Maybe just add that two year contract. No. Super, thank you. I'm okay to, Council President.
Thank you.
Two other agenda issues. One is, we have, we have, it was deferred till tonight to talk, to vote on the police vehicles, but we've only gotten part of the report from Nathan. I sent him some written questions around Thanksgiving, and he said he would get back to me, but he needed more time to answer them. So the request was to do it next week. I'm wondering if there's a motion to defer item S1A and B until next Monday so that he can provide us that report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of deferring until December 14th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred. So we had one other thing that's going to be late breaking. So I'll be interested in what people think. But Brian McClatchy sent an email of an amended purchase and sale agreement between Catholic charities and the city around the Gonzaga Haven project. Apparently, the bank for them requested some slight changes in the language clarifying how one of the parcels could be used and needed some changes in order to complete that financing. They're supposed to close on that deal on the 10th. And they were, their lawyer and James Richmond have been working on the language, and we just got that language not too long ago today. Brian sent it in to everybody. The main difference, if I understand it, is that there is a building on there that will either remain, and a parcel that will either remain used for affordable housing for the term under the deed covenant, or any revenues from it will go for affordable housing, or both. So it keeps the spirit and the intent of it, but it satisfies the bank. And so their request is to suspend the rules and put it on tonight's agenda. But I'll open it up for any discussion and then potentially a motion to suspend the rules.
Moved to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Seconded that.
Okay. Any discussion about suspending the rules? Hearing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. Any, is there a motion to add it to tonight's legislative agenda as set out by Mr. McClatchy?
So moved that.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Candace seconded.
Second, I guess I should go off mute.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Candace seconded. Any discussion?
I'll just add in, I think I know why that happened because that's an office building on the far north part. It would be pretty hard to convert that to housing. My family actually used to own that building, so I'm kind of familiar. It's an office building, it'd be expensive to do. So they could, but it's probably better off to take the rent.
Yep. You are correct. Okay. Councilmember Wooderson.
Was that now a building the city could use engineering services or as they build, it could transition to new space?
I'm not sure, the, I know that Catholic community, Catholic charities has offered to continue to rent it to the city. They want, if I'm understanding all the emails back and forth, that's my understanding. So also, we'll have some time between now and this evening to look in and email either Jonathan Malahan or James Richmond or Scott Simmons if you have questions about it as well. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of adding to tonight's legislative agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, that's added to the agenda. All right, that's all the agenda questions that I had. Any other things that people want to handle on the agenda? Not seeing any, if then we can turn to the consent agenda, Ms. Pfister.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchases by Fleet Operations from Kenworth Sales, Spokane, Washington for the Water Department using Sourcewell Contract number 081716-KTC of A, a construction truck, $208,001, including tax; B, a valet truck, $319,353.16, including tax; number two, five year contract with access information protected, Spokane, Washington for offsite record, storage, and retrieval services for various city departments from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2026. Estimated annual amount not to exceed $54,000. Item number three, two year contract renewal with Toby's Body and Fender Incorporated, Spokane, Washington for auto body repair services for Fleet Services. Annual expenditure $385,000, including tax. Item number four, report of the mayor of pending A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through November 25, 2020. Total $6,903,353.04 with Parks and Library claims approved with respect to boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $3,627,207.66. B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through November 28, 2020. Number five, city council meeting minutes for October 15 and November 23, 2020.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, the consent agenda has passed. And we do not have an executive session this week. I think we're going to have one next week. But with that, we'll be adjourned until 6:00 PM. We'll see you then.